January 2013. Total calls for that month were thirty-five. County had twenty-six of the thirty-five. Eleven of the twenty-six paid. But the county's paying even eighteen-hundred dollars for the month. Oh, people pairs, repairs have worn out. Things are going on right now. The new station we're working on down at Second Rock does some partial clearing. Waiting on the guy to come and cut the pine trees. Gave pine trees to a fellow instead of come and get them out of our way. So that's what we're waiting on there. We'll start putting some dirt in there. We're gonna raise the station to about the level of the room. And then just back straight off the room into the station. We're not gonna worry about raising the whole piece of property, just the building. Everybody keeps it that's wet, so if we get it built up, it don't matter how wet it is. Truck go in the building, out the building, that's it. So that's kinda it. Something that's come to my attention that I'm working on already. I've done several letters to ISO. It seemed to stop in Spire District shrink. I don't know how that happened. I got on the phone with the lady and I told her, I said, "It's been I S A for twenty-five years. How come all of a sudden it's smaller than it used to be?" She couldn't explain it either. So anyhow, I sent a letter to ISO requesting a field survey. So we're sending a fellow down. We're gonna see if we can get that, what happened. Good many houses in Stockton have not considered in the fire district, so they can't even get a nine rating that they have. They got a ten. You're insured. Even though, for example, the one that came to my attention was a hill bed. It was three point three miles from the station. Should've been a nine, but it was a ten. Cause he's out of the district. And I said, "How can that be?" Old county's coming. But anyhow, the lady, she cut it down and she said, "Best thing you do is get a field survey." And I said, "What I need to do?" And she told me and I said, "Okay."
And who would do that?
The people at ISO. Yeah. And I sent them a field survey request to ISO, so we're gonna get that straightened out. I don't know how long this will take, but we're gonna get it straightened out. Alright, back to the last thing that I'm working on. This will be an ongoing project, the radio tower. We're talking about that. The tower, they gave me some dimensions on what it's gonna take. And I've done some measuring. A three-hundred-foot tower will fit at Lakeland Fire Station. So it's not a matter of finding more land, which we do have some land. We got the option to go to the twenty-one acres that the county owns at the old garbage stuff, if y'all remember that. But I'd rather keep it at Lakeland Station because everything's already there. We already got a backup power supply and the building's there. It just makes more sense. So but from what they're telling me, this could take a year. You gotta get all kinds of permits for the tower. Several people, even, I was told that even a migratory bird permit, they have to do a survey and make sure you ain't putting it up where birds are running to it somehow.
Now, now.
So anyhow, so this will be an ongoing thing. I just have to keep updating as I get things. What I wanted to tell you.
Go ahead.
I went down there and done something I think we can do right now that'll help. This is the new antenna I was trying. Turned out it don't help a bit. If you look at his antenna, how short it is. This one's longer. It didn't help. I went down to the Stockton Fire Department on the south end. And I got me another guy up at Lakeland. And I called him on my radio. And I did this test because the radio man told me to do it. He said, "It's a lot of it's how you hold your radio." So I wanted to go see if he was right. I went to the Stockton Station. I faced Lakeland. Held my radio in front of me, straight up, and called him. And he answered. No problem. A lot of people like to talk on their radio like this. There's your thumb, key it up, turn it over. So without moving, I just turned it over and called him back. He said, "That's not as good." Then I just simply turned around and faced the other direction and called him. He said, "I can't hardly hear you." So just that simple movement from here to here to here. So what I propose to do to help them out is buy these microphones. And that changes everything here to here. And what he could do now, it don't matter where you face it, you can be turned around anyway. You got to have antenna up in the air, you can talk with the microphone. These microphones are like eighty bucks a piece. But we can buy a few of these for the ones down in Stockton and let them, you know, put it where they can. That's the best reception they gonna get, right there. And this may even remedy the problem. The trucks are talking fine, but she's handheld, but don't. They can't get out. And if this remedies a handheld problem, then we quit talking about tower. We're good with what we got. So I propose, I'm gonna buy a few of these and we'll try that.
I was gonna ask, are you sure the tower's gonna help?
Well, they said the tower'll help. Going to three hundred feet's gonna make a good benefit. But still, I mean, I'm looking, you know, they fifty, sixty thousand dollars involved here, so I can buy an eighty-dollar microphone. But I mean, this'll be something to try. That's the only thing I knew when I hooked mine up. And he said, "That's real good." But it's basically, it only makes sense from here to here, to turn it around makes a difference. But this makes a big difference. Get it up in the air, the signals leave the antenna in a round circle going out. But if you're doing this way, the circle's going that way. Circle goes that way. Circle's up in the air. Anyhow, I'm gonna try that. Let's see how that works out. I'll let you know if you have any questions. Any questions on anything?
Was you able to get a price on the repeaters?
Repeater? That's fine. I just quit with the repeater because he said the repeater's not gonna help anybody. It'll help Stockton. It won't help Westside. Westside got the same problem. Teeterville and Mud Creek, they don't say much, which, they're not as far out, but they don't have as many calls, so they don't get into the problem as much as Westside and Stockton. They got as many more calls than Mud Creek and Teeterville. They really had seventy-five, "Hey, I can't talk on the radio." But I just quit with the repeater because he said, "That's not gonna help everybody. It's just gonna help Stockton." You gonna spend, you know, all that money just for that? And then you might go over and put another one up to Westside. Another repeater there. So he said, "Best thing to do is raise your tower." You know, get the tower on up and that's gonna make a big difference. But if we can make it all work with these microphones, then quit with all of it. But I mean, I'm just gonna try. It's all I can do. I ain't gonna buy two or three of these microphones and see what it goes on. Like I said, the trucks are talking fine. We got a problem with trucks. They're loud and clear. It's just easy to up hand it. They're just not made to go out in that kind of distance.
The trucks don't talk good when it's bad weather, Gary.
Yeah, I went down.
Now, they don't talk good and that tower might help that.
I went down to Wayfair Church right before that storm, that last storm had come through. The weather was kicking up and all. I said, "Now's a good time." And I was able to talk back to Wayfair facing Lakeland, holding it up like this. I mean, they said it worked perfect, but I could get through it. And I was all the way down. I was out of our town and actually right there in Wayfair Church. But yeah, the weather's gonna affect it, but I mean, like I said, can't cover all the aspects, you know, just do the best you can.
So Gary, how about still getting a price on those repeaters and seeing what that would run? The two of those could easily be cheaper than a tower.
It's not gonna be cheaper than a tower, I tell you that. It won't, no, cause I mean, you gotta put a tower up down there to put the repeater on. You know, I asked him about putting it on top of the sirens down there. And he said, "No, he said, "I ain't high enough." And I said, "For it to do you any good, you gotta get at least a hundred-foot of it." So you're hitting a tower. Only tower down here, I think, is a cell phone tower. So you're looking at renting space off a cell phone tower, you can put it up on a tower. You know, so either way, you got a tower involved, not as high, but repeater, tower, the whole nine yards. That's why he said, "You gonna spend all that kind of money, just go raise your tower at the station and that'll fix the problem."
Well, you could even put an antenna on the lease tower, didn't you?
But what?
An antenna.
On.
Instead of putting it on, do you have antenna, you could put an antenna on a lease sale tower?
Oh, yeah. I mean, you're just looking at paying lease from now on, forever. I mean, you know, you got a way to differ, I don't know how much those leases are, but you're looking at leasing rents from the rent space versus, and that's something you'll pay for now on. I mean, it's not a year thing, two-year thing, it's from now on. So that's the reason when they put nine-one-one in, they didn't wanna run a landline to the Lakeland Station like it used to be, because that's a phone bill to pay from now on where they set it up where it talks airways. There's no landline going from station to station. So you key it up, you talk to the Lakeland Station. Lakeland Station talks to the nine-one-one, so they talk back to the Lakeland Station and it goes back to you. That's how it works.
It's all about to get an estimate anyway. Let's do that, cause we're gonna have fires from now on too, so.
Yep, yep. I'd love to get you some estimates on that, which we'll move forward on a town if I can make this one.
If that works, that'd be fine. Will, Jim, if you can.
I mean, this is something I'm gonna do now. We do this now versus, even if you do repeater, you're looking at a while before you go. We don't have any money to get started with till next budget, July.
Are they being kinda grand?
I mean, I'm one percent over budget right now. So I don't have any money to do anything. So it's gonna be a while for me to make anything happen.
About the grants or anything?
I don't know about the grants. I haven't looked at any grants. A lot of the grants I don't qualify for. Quit with the truck grants, I don't qualify for them anymore. But government's changed so much with the grants, it's just hard, hard to keep up with it. Right now, I'm wasting my time on the truck grants, so I quit with that.
Would you check with R C?
I'll check with R C. They could be up there tomorrow. They could be a communication. We did get a communication grant back in nine-one-one when we started the Senate, because our system, the reason we got it was our system was not compatible with the new nine-one-one system. So they basically was gonna have to change all our system. And they did it. We got like a forty-five thousand dollar grant at that time. But they put in a repeater and all that stuff to get it compliant, sure. I'll see what they do.
Here, here. Who was the gentleman that said that repeater would not work?
What's that?
Who was the gentleman that said repeater would not work?
Oh, David with R C Communication about us. That should do us all, our department, the nine-one-one system. They do all of that.
Next, we have the road department report, which is Bob Morse, Detective Morse. He's not in, he had to go out on a call with one of his riders, he had a situation with one. So he stopped by and updated me. He had requested, had been requested, to declare a nineteen-eighty-eight Chevy half-ton long wheelbase truck, nineteen-eighty-eight Dodge half-ton short wheelbase, a nineteen-seventy-three Chevy C sixty-five two-ton yellow truck, a two thousand and six Challenger tractor, which is the sidearm holder that we have, and two nineteen-ninety-nine International dump trucks. He'd like those to be declared surplus and see what kind of price we can get. And then hopefully we would replace this Challenger tractor. It's got a, the way it's built and designed, it puts all the weight and pressure on the block of the motor. It's actually tracked the motor two different times. We've had to weld it up. And he's also asked that we consider allowing him to buy a nineteen-eighty-eight Freightliner, which is an eighteen-yard capacity dump compared to these that are four and a half yards. He's thinking that, get rid of these two smaller trucks, cut down on fuel, and replace it with this Freightliner. Seems to make sense. He's found it, individual has it here at the county, trying to get rid of it. He's checked the price on it. I think he said it was either ten or, I think the gentleman was asking twelve, but he's trying to get it for ten thousand. You know, how he thought, gonna do the surplus first or discussion on me and then talk about the dump truck. Yeah, I'll just give you this list, whenever we get through. I mean, it's cause we, Suzanne, it's in time. Just because we declare stuff surplus, if we don't want the price, we just keep it and put it back in the fleet. But there's no way to know what it's, what we'll get unless we declare surplus. I think you need to consider keeping maybe more of these small trucks. Yeah, we got a third, small dump truck. And we got a third. And I think we can just put it out there and get the biz and then we can reject them or, you know, whichever truck we want to. He just asked that we do this now. Cause like I say, all we're doing is advertising. We don't get enough for it. We just turn it down. Motion to advertise these vehicles and equipment as surplus, road department. Motion, yeah, second.
Second.
Second, Scott. Brothers, get some in there. All in favor? And then how y'all feel about the dump truck? He got one drive with a CDL and he's got another one or two that wanna go and get their CDLs and that. I mean, we can get this one over. Y'all wanna wait till we do that or you asking to wait on person till we see what the discussion will bring?
I think we might as well wait on it. See what, see what his book is looking like too.
We got work to do. So we're table out. Does that, we have to advertise that surplus? How many times?
We need some time, about two weeks.
Two weeks. So we're gonna have some time. Yeah. I'm gonna cut off data. Try to wait. So we have, you know, we can reject any of our bills. Okay, let's see. I don't see this.
He's gonna do someone call.
And patrol, alright.
He just said for the month of January, he had fifty trips and he picked up ten dollars.
The M S report.
Alright, good morning. We had a total of a hundred and twenty calls for January. Of those calls, sixty-two was in Lakeland, eight in Teeterville, ten in Mud Creek, seventeen at Westside, sixteen at Stockton. The rest were scattered out through neighboring counties. We had mutual aid called in five times. And this is a new number that I'm gonna start giving you. We actually handled two of our own mutual aid calls by using our new educated people. Ruby North and Brandon is certified now there in Stockton Station. I have Dee Dee certified at Lakeland Station now. And I hired a person part-time that's a paramedic that works in equipment that lives in Lakeland. And he stands by for us on occasions. This month already, we've handled three of our own mutual aid calls. I wanna report that to you and show you that we are making progress with our mutual aid problem. We're not just sitting there watching it grow. We actually went out to other counties this last month five times. Our transports, fifteen came to Lakeland, fifty-three went to Valos and S G M C. The rest were scattered out throughout hospitals. Our response times, this is a new report that Mr. Solis had asked me to keep up with. Our average needs to be under eight minutes to any call anywhere in the county. We average seven point forty-four seconds for all calls. I'm gonna research this. The area that I'm getting my report from has too much area for human error to mess it up. So I'm gonna go back to the nine-one-one dispatch tickets, every ticket, and get the actual time of the call and the actual time that's documented at the nine-one-one center. And start basing my report on it instead of on the report that the state gives me. Cause I think there's some mess up in the times. It showed me taking forty-five minutes to do a call. The only way that could've happened is if we were at S G M C. When the call came out, we responded from S G M C and went to Nashville for a mutual aid call. That didn't happen. I don't know where that time came from. It could just easily be somebody mashed the wrong button. Instead of six minutes or something, it ended up being sixteen or twenty-six or whatever. The nine-one-one dispatch ticket is the most correct. I'm gonna base my report on it from now on. The education, our new class is rolling good. We've got, I think, fifteen students in it. It's a combination first responder and E M T class. And it's funded by the state trauma commission. So it's very, very little cost for the county or the hospital. The cost it'll have for you is just partial of the book. The books are like a hundred and ten dollars. The state paid, the trauma commission already paid seventy-five dollars per book. So for your firefighters, you'll have thirty, thirty-five dollars a book to pay. The hospital pays the amount, excuse me, for their employees. Our rescue trucks that the forestry was looking at is pretty much put on hold. They're not letting them get anything from the return surplus now. Trying to get butt going on that. It was very disappointing for the folks in Stockton and the Westside that took the training a couple of years ago. They still don't have a truck to respond to them. And now I gotta redo their certifications and recheck their competencies, and they still don't have a truck. So I know we don't have anything in this year's budget for that, but that's maybe something we can think of on next year's budget, to try to get them, get them something to respond to these calls. We've got the training in place. We've got the people ready. We've got everything, but the truck for them to operate out of. Repairs for EMS, I've got our oldest truck, which is due for remounting hopefully next year. The electrical problem that I've been having is getting worse and worse. I called the company that remounted our last truck and they have an appointment set for tomorrow morning. For fifteen hundred dollars, they're gonna rewire what they're having trouble with, they're putting their sirens in it. And the reason I wanted that company to do it is when it is time to remount the truck, gotta be an expense we don't have to redo. If they did it, if they upgraded it, it'd already be to their specifications. That'd just, we're spending a little bit of money this year instead of spending it on next year on the remount. And I'm ready to carry that. I've got my help lined up tomorrow to carry it. The company is right outside of the Grange that does it. That's about it for my report, unless you have any questions? Can I make a comment? We don't actually do any emergency management report for you. I'm still, when John retires, with your blessing, I'll be the emergency manager for the county as well as the hospital. The problem with our radios and our towers and our communications, that's something that may be budgeted into emergency management. And that would fix everything. The sheriff, the EMS, the fire department, the communications in general. Get us one communication system for everybody and apply for a grant through emergency management and get it all fixed. It's just a suggestion.
Yeah, that would work, but if you mind looking into that.
FEMA has grants for several things that we could put into if being a county-wide emergency management project instead of just a fire department project.
And speaking of that, have you started, were you going to this meeting as well?
Yes. I go, the hospital sends me to a lot of the hospital meetings, which is in a different region than the counties. It's messed up. I still don't go to the county-region meetings that John Pruitt goes to. I go to the hospital-region meetings, which is in a separate region than what Lanier is, but it's the same type meeting. Mutual aid task forces is mutual aid task force regardless of which region. But as far as I know, I still don't go to the Lanier County, County version of that meeting. I will go if you want me to.
I mean, if you can go, I don't think it would be, you know, make everybody more aware.
It's a lot of luxury for me to go to it. I think it's in, I think either Douglas or Atkinson County, right where the ones I'm going to for the hospital, the Camilla.
I think, I think I was told it was in back. Well, they might move it around too.
You're getting in schedule, I'll be glad you're there. Emergency management is something that we need to really pick up.
I was gonna say too, we can start including here with the M S report.
Yes, sir.
At least it would stay up at, you know, forefront. Being our attention would not be better probably focused there, at least hear what's going on, what ain't going on, and what we need to do. I guess you'd have to coordinate that with John too.
Right, I'll make sure everything's, it's fine with me. One of the myths of emergency management is failure to plan as a plan to fail. And that's always true. If we don't get things started and get it rolling, at least understand we have that threat. And that threat hits us, it catches us every time.
Maybe start next month if you can include something, I mean, whatever it might be.
Yes, everything I do, I mention to John, cause I don't wanna step on, have any problems with him. He is the director. He's kinda just put me as his assistant. I'll do whatever for both of you that makes it better for the county.
Alright, well, thank you. Any questions for me, or maybe you'll meet us? Alright, thank you. Hart, Redd, and then Noel, we're here this morning. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. I came to the Recreation Department for January, we're youth basketball league, full age groups, karate, dance class. We also have line dance class for adults, as well as we give registration for spring sports. While I'm standing, we have children department, we'll maybe update us on some of the decisions David made.
Alright. Remember, how you doing?
Good. How are you? Uh, we had, our last meeting, we voted, I mean, the board voted a three-to-one vote to enforce the no-pay-no-play rule that was already in. The bylaws just had it strictly enforced. Also voted unanimously to require each participant at the department to provide a new certified birth certificate. All other birth certificates that were previously on file, Mr. Solis has been instructed to discard. And if each person, as they sign up, will have to bring a new certified birth certificate. He'll make the copy of the certified birth certificate and give them back their certified.
Two thousand and twelve from two thousand and eleven. Barbara Rowe has always been our number one in reports and investigations, and it actually went to number two. And Eastside of Lakeland actually came up to number one. This'll be another thing that the team will look at, because this past year, we do a plan each year, and this past year, it was the only focus on Barbara Rowe. So the team may look at this and add Eastside to that, but that'll be up to them. And I will report this to the city so they will know. But everything in Barbara Rowe did go down, their reports and their investigations. They're still the same with the type of child abuse and neglect. It's inadequate supervision, domestic violence, and the bruises, welts, and abrasions are number three. Oak Ridge subdivision went to a total of only one part, one report, and no substantiated. That can either be that Oak Ridge subdivision is now the safest place in the world, or nobody's reporting anything there. I can't really tell you. Stockton Road had twelve reports, only four substantiated. Their number one is inadequate supervision, and their number two is domestic violence. Eastside, just to give you the information, I know it's not part of the county, it's right behind bits. They have thirty-one reports. Their number one is inadequate supervision. They are tied on physical abuse and domestic violence. And their number three is inadequate food, clothing, and sugar. The military reports also went down. So that was, that was good too, and it's gonna help for many Air Force Base. But these numbers help our team decide what direction we're gonna go in and what work we'll be doing. But we were initially excited to see that we had gone down in all of the areas, so. Any questions? If I didn't go too fast, I just don't wanna. Thank you very much.
Okay, number eight, Tom, you will do a financial report.
Yes, sir. Everyone should have a copy of the financial report in folders in January the thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen. Our revenue at this point is at forty-one point eighty-one percent collected. If you'll look at your expenditure report, I'm gonna bring you up the board's attention to our overall budget. We should be at fifty-eight point thirty-three percent or less. Right now, our overall budget is at fifty-eight point eighty-five percent. We are over our total budget by point fifty-two percent. So I'm asking the board if they can get together sometime and they try to discuss on how to try to get the stance on. The splash budget is at thirty-seven point forty-seven percent, so there's still one.
I mean, I think in some of the offices in areas, we have control, more control than others in. I think we need to do our best to take action and speak with these officers and I guess we'll do that. I'll get with you. Have you meet with each one of them? Make them aware of where they're at and what we expect and, you know, make, make that somebody offer there to, whatever we gotta do. I mean, we gotta do our best to save right now in this town. We'd ask for cooperation from all officers, but at least tend to be able to have more influence in some and where we do, we'll do our best. I agree with that.
I know we did meet and, uh, we go ahead and send out a request from all offices asking for the next budget year. What, did we say March fifteenth or what? Try to get those in by.
We need to do it by March fifteenth.
Get you a letter asking everyone to turn in their budget request for next year by March fifteenth.
If they, um, should question me on why we're doing this so early, saying that they don't have enough.
Well, last year we didn't get the budget adopted in time, that's a good reason.
They may say they don't have all their expenditures, nor do they want it this.
Well, I mean, this is the dealer requests and just try to get things moved a little bit earlier this year. You had, I think you spoke with South Georgia Regional Commission on our internet.
Yes, sir, uh, there's also a copy in your folders showing, they came in and did a evaluation of our courthouse and our internet and things of that nature. On, on the backside, that the tax commission or tax assessor and party bay and magistrate and elections is on, all of those are on one internet line. It's causing the tax assessor to, it's throwing them off the internet. Um, they had several other lines that were going into Rebecca's office that had to be moved. But we had several areas that they did find that have some concerns that we need to look at taking care of it and proposals are in your folders, uh, if you've had a chance to look over them through the weekend. And, um, we just need to get the board's approval to let them come in and, and put on like the, the new virus, uh, wear that we need. The other was not macrofever, uh, this dramatically stops the virus before they get it on the computers. The free ones that were being put on our computers, it, the only thing it would do would tell you when you got a virus. It didn't actually stop it. Um, also, the server needs to have some technical rebuilds on it, uh, as far as the way it was configured. But you can see what they put down after they did their evaluation and we're just, like I said, asking the board to give us approval, let them come in and do what needs to be done with.
And I think their recommendation, if they do this, it should leave in our problems and we shouldn't really have a lot of expenses going forward.
Yes, sir, it should correct it, yes, sir.
Got a lot of chores there, so we're, we've been up protected, we, well, they've been protected. Motion to have that done on that motion. Second. Second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, now, I guess, is that it?
Uh, and if you want, if you do the rest of it, then come back to the appointments and other things.
Uh, well, the appointments, let's see, we're on countywide, we, you know, wanna move forward the, the Florida county attorney, tax assessor, department, department, at this time. Someone wanna make a motion to reappoint, that's those positions.
I'll make a motion to reappoint the positions.
Or second. Second. Any other discussion? All in favor? And as we know, we're still advertising for the administrator, manager, administrator position and, and, uh, we'll make the decision by April first, if not.
Interview.
Interview, yeah, I'm sorry. Excuse me, interview.
I don't know, you'll do reappoint, do it in fact or not?
Um, we just can't continue, it wasn't on me, I'm sorry, Albert. Uh, I don't know, I guess we could go through all, there's some media, I, I don't know how many, how many there is, is it?
Part of point, yeah.
Albert's saying, I think you had the county commissioner building this, or zoning it, zoning commissioner.
That's what, that's, that's what previous, that was before the county commissioner wanted to do. I think we were between now and next month, we'll probably get all that worked out and just do it all at one time, I said, yeah, we're, that's what we do here. If you will, just please continue to do your job, your work, your job that you're doing there for us and all those areas, we appreciate it. Uh, and we have also a few other boards that need some appointments, Seven Rivers, uh, that's a watershed board or something, and, uh, Commissioner Simpson has volunteered to serve on that board and let's wait until we find someone else. So I'll take him up on that, we haven't found anybody else. Uh, that a motion, if anyone could go ahead and make that, somebody made that motion to.
I'll make the motion that we appoint Harold Simpson to Seven Rivers.
Uh, second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. On the, and then the, there's also the nine-one-one board, Commissioner Scott Green volunteered to step in, replace Commissioner Lamb. There a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
There a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor? Aye. Um, also, on appointments, we have our South Georgia Joint Development Authority, appointees are needing to be reappointed. Uh, they have been for the last several times, I believe, Jason Shaw, the reconvene in Copland, and they both have agreed to stay on in those, uh, two positions. And so we have a, a motion on those two.
I'll make the motion.
Second, and Harold second. Any discussion on those? All in favor? Aye. Okay. On the planning and zoning commission, Commissioner Green, you think you, indicate you had someone in mind there?
We have, uh, Danny Fender, that one he applied for?
That's correct.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Danny Fender.
There a second?
I'll second.
There a second? Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Oliver Stein.
Danny Fender, Stein. Okay. On the library board, um, I know we've had lots of folks, uh, come to us and have the names put on the list, uh, they're, well, we're ready to appoint two members on our behalf this morning.
What is, the recommendation from the, uh, there were, there were two names recommended, uh, and, 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 no, one was, uh, Mike Sarasola and the other one.
The Red Charles Jordan.
The Red Charles Jordan. Um, there a motion to put these two individuals? I'll make much, I'll make one, there a second? Okay. Any further discussion on those two individuals or either one of those individuals? All in favor? Aye. Uh, I think, uh, going back to Sandy Sanders, I, I know in the past we had some discussion, the, uh, the Global Development Authority needs two members to be appointed, uh, Cindy Pullen's term is expired and Kim Mattsohn has resigned. Uh, and then Ben Copeland has asked to replace, uh, Kim Mattsohn there, has got to do something with terms and I think Cindy's pulling is only like a two or three-year term and Kim would be a four or five, I don't remember, but he, uh, Copeland's asked to replace him and then, um, uh, I'm not sure about the other one. I think Sandy was gonna make a recommendation on that one, but, um, I think maybe we go ahead and, could, does anyone wanna make much of the point, Copeland, but they, to replace Kim Mattsohn?
Make a motion.
There a second?
I'll second.
Harold second. Any further discussion on that? So, all in favor? Aye. I think, I think we'll wait, um, 'cause there was two names on the Pullen position and, and I'm just, I'd rather have, uh, Sandy come and give us his recommendation or, or who has agreed to serve in that position. I speculate on that 'cause I might be wrong, so. Is there anything I have missed on appointments or? Did I make that a take care of? Which one we have, let's see, I think then, also, uh, I guess we had under, item eight was a historical society and, uh, tenth anniversary or celebration there at Burnt Church, is that right? Miss Mary Creed still here or? She left, okay.
Is she any?
All right, well, they have asked to use the facility that Burnt Church to have this celebration. Um, certainly that's, I think, historical society, if anyone's gonna use it, I think that's appropriate. Certainly don't remember the day, I apologize, I thought she was gonna speak on that, but would there be objections to letting historical society have that? I mean, I think it's gonna be on Saturday afternoon.
And I expressed to her, you know, there's Irish rooms or power, things like that, she said they make it some houses out there or something and, and they're like.
So, I know she, she, and all of us to know that we were invited and please come, so we've got a pretty spectacular day set up there, I think, I think it's twelve or two or, while I don't know that date, but we definitely need to get that, let everybody know what day that is.
Um, I see.
You had, I know you gave all of our training information in our folders, but that's just kinda, two-term vision commissioners, might wanna seek to get certified or whatnot?
Yes, sir, and, um, I do need to meet with each one to find out who would like to attend the Savannah annual training, 'cause I, I need to try and get them set up with hotels and everything today and get them registered. So, you know, I'm saying after the meeting, we can locate some of these, and once we go, so I can try and make arrangements for that.
Okay. All right, if I can, Albert, you wanna give us the administrator report?
The only thing I have is that we received some money from DOTs of LM, we get set up a separate checking account for the LM fund. That's for three reasons, we, we don't know about the, uh, uh, April of, around April, we're in the next year's budget, that's the county's match, only that is, we'll be thirty percent of all the pork we got from the state. And then the next one is we've got to close that public period in more than eleven o'clock in the stock and product, it is complete, we'll be complete.
Is that the grand jury reason?
We go have it.
Here.
That's probably eleven o'clock, eleven o'clock, close that public period.
All right, that's all right. Item ten is, uh, is our, Brett Kelly with Southern, was it Southern Tracking Service? So, uh, I guess before you speak, let me just read this letter I, I received this morning, actually, uh, from Judge Perkins and Judge McLean, let's see where I put this. There it is, I got it. It said, "Dear Commissioners, we have recently been requested to consider using leg monitors in lieu of pre-trial incarceration for criminal defendants." Would you please give us a hand? Let me see, I don't know if she can read this. Uh, "The law has always provided for bond for criminal defendants. Those individuals charged with crimes are entitled to bond provided they can satisfy the court as to the following: the defendant will appear in court upon notice, defendant will not flee the jurisdiction, defendant will not likely commit another crime, defendant poses no threat to witnesses or victims in the case in which he or she is charged and all four of the elements are sat, if all four of the elements are satisfied, then the court sets a reasonable bond and puns posting the bond in definitive lease. Nothing is black and white, meantime, there are borderline situations where the court is almost but not quite convinced that bond is appropriate. In some of those cases, a leg monitor might provide the court with additional assurances that the defendant would comply with bond conditions. We have utilized leg monitors in the past and have mixed results. Leg monitors provide the judicial system with no op, with another tool that can give some relief to crowded jails and reduce costs for incarceration. However, the use of leg monitors provide only limited relief because they're not applicable to every person denied bond. Notice further emphasized that bond is preferable for pre-trial option, but bond simply cannot be granted in every case. Likewise, leg monitors are not applicable in every case where bond is not appropriate." Having said all of that, if the board of commissioners wants the court to utilize leg monitors where possible, then we request that you approve the cost for leg monitors upon the maximum amount per day for the county to pay. We will then develop the internal procedure to provide the defendant's deprocess with consideration of leg monitors where it is appropriate. We are not endorsing any company or individual to provide this service. If you agree to pay the, for the cost of use of leg monitors, we will select a provider that will meet these needs of court and will, and be within the, uh, the daily cost approved by the board. Thank you for your consideration and please advise if you have any further questions. Yours very truly, C. Dane Perkins, Chief Judge, and Howard E. McLean, Judge. So, I guess it's that first, like I said, we just got this this morning.
They discussed any costs?
I got a sheet in front of me, I'll help you get it in the front.
Is that, did we get it back on?
That was, yeah, it was in your packet.
I've, I've, I've got it in half, in half single. Yeah. So, I mean, I'm, I was trying to, so they're asking us to say that, I think what we, could we take action on that? We wanna do the leg monitors, but yet we might need some time to, to distinguish these.
You, you wanna do it, but can't then, cost, we might be cost prohibitive, I don't, I don't know what that's.
I mean, we would, we would just agree to be, I don't know what would be.
That's what this is, like, maybe, that's.
Well, I know Brett's here, you might can enlighten us on something, I know there's other vendors out there, but I guess while we kinda learning all about this, you can give us some information on.
You're, you're with, uh?
I own Southern Tracking Services.
Okay, so.
I sent y'all a packet last month, uh, this has been talked about for the last couple of years, uh, and they are a couple vendors out there, uh, I don't know who they are, I guess they're in the Land County Desert right now. And I talked to Albert about it earlier, I mean, there was an article in the paper a few weeks ago about, about Austin, but they had a hundred people on bracelets at like seven dollars a day, but now, if you get it, I told Albert, we can get y'all down to seven dollars a day, but for seven dollars a day, they gonna have to put them on. I mean, the sheriff department will have to put them on, they'll have to put them in the program and then they'll basically be tracking them. I mean, we'll track them too, but I mean, it's gonna put more work on the sheriff. And I don't know if y'all got a hundred people, I mean, if you get that kinda price, you gonna have to have a hundred people in there. The price that I came up with, I told Albert, is fourteen dollars a day. I mean, that's what us coming over here, us putting a leg monitor on, us doing everything, the sheriff ain't gotta do anything. The only thing I asked the sheriff to do was if we had an opportunity or, uh, a quay in where somebody was trying to cut the bracelet off, I would contact them over here and have them go get that person before he could cut that bracelet off. That's all I asked him to do. Monitor, and I don't know if they got this about Austin, I mean, this is the only company that, that does this, it's got a self-home limited monitor. And this is, I talked to the sheriff a little bit about it on my feet, completely understood 'cause this, it's new in this area. I mean, it's, it's new, I mean, that's used in the past, but I mean, it's basically been juvenile and stuff like that, it ain't been, you know, prisoners in jail, you know, not here. But, I mean, it's, it's coming, it can save y'all, I can hit somebody, I mean, I give y'all a lay out on the cost and, uh, it's ten prisoners a day and what I base my numbers off is the average cost at thirty-five dollars a day and I think that's pretty much what y'all paying. Uh, it's probably rule of thumb everywhere. I mean, would you have ten prisoners on a bracelet instead of ten prisoners in jail, it'd save you seventy-five thousand, six hundred dollars a year. I mean, you're talking, um, sixty-three hundred dollars a month. If you had twenty prisoners on a bracelet, it would save you twelve thousand, six hundred dollars a month versus. If you had twenty prisoners on a bracelet, it would save you twelve thousand, six hundred dollars a month versus, you know. This is, I know, this is thirty days. If you got twenty prisoners in jail for thirty days, thirty-five dollars a day, it costs you twenty-one thousand dollars a year. I've been tracking y'all a little bit through Cook County system over there, y'all have had an average of thirty-two people locked up over there. Now, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that everybody needs to be on the monitor, 'cause I don't believe everybody needs to be on the monitor, and I know y'all do too, but you've got individuals that you could put on the monitor, that you gotta deal with right now. I mean, that's just the truth. Now, whether you wanna pay fourteen dollars a day or thirty-five dollars a day, that's a better of a view, but in two months, tracking y'all over there, y'all's gonna receive five thousand dollars over there in two months. I mean, you're talking about saving half that much money. If you had, I mean, it just, it, it, it costs, like I said, twenty prisoners for a year, let's say about ten prisoners for a year, costs you a hundred twenty-six thousand dollars. Ten prisoners on a bracelet costs you fifty thousand dollars. You're saving, you're saving five thousand dollars. Twenty prisoners a year costs you two hundred fifty, two thousand dollars in jail. On a bracelet, it costs you a hundred and eight, a hundred thousand, eight hundred dollars, which saves you a hundred fifty-one thousand, two hundred dollars. Thirty prisoners, and I don't know how many y'all got locked up, I think last time I talked to y'all over here, y'all had like sixty-something people locked up in surrounding counties, not just Cook County. But if you had thirty people on a bracelet, if you pay a jail cost, it's three hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars a year, it costs you a hundred fifty-one thousand, two hundred dollars a year to put them on a bracelet, which will save your county two hundred twenty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars a year. I mean, the contract's pretty self-explanatory. I mean, like I said, with fourteen dollars a day, we're taking the sheriff basically out of his way. I mean, the judges has agreed that they're on board with this, I mean, I thought, Albert talked to both of them, I mean, we got them writing this letter, telling y'all that they were on board. This is not a new line item for y'all. This ain't a new expense, you're already paying this expense. This is in your jail cost budget line item, or should they? I mean, so I'm not here trying to create a new item. I'm here trying to help you save money. And that's all I'm here for. I mean, I talked to the sheriff, he's not a hundred percent on one. He, he ain't against it. He told me he didn't have a vampire to do no extra. Well, I, he ain't got to do no extra. I mean, the only thing I asked him to do, and he, and we gonna have to work together, I mean, you know. Only thing I asked him to do was if we had an incident where somebody was trying to cut bracelets off, I wanted him to send somebody there until we could get there. I mean, all other violations, the judges is gonna set criteria up. What Mr. Howard told me was the ones that he wanted on a bracelet, he wanted them in the house from seven to seven. That's pretty simplified. I mean, we can draw it up to where if they leave that house, this thing is in the alarm. We can call them on that bracelet and tell them, hey, you're out of there, you know. We, we do everything. We get to have a problem, and he comes up there and says, I'm having to go out there, I'm having to go out there, and I'll, I'll, I'll manage it. And I'll take him out of the equation as much as I can. But I do need to work with him. Because, I mean, once the, once the judges draw up this parameter on who they willing to put on these bracelets, where this is gonna save you money is if they pick somebody up during the middle of the night and saw, you know, violation of probation, instead of them taking them to the jail, and it costs you thirty-five dollars, and he can call me and I can come over here and put that bracelet on my thing that night. That way you eliminating that jail cost altogether. Now, whether that's gonna happen every time, I don't know, I can't get you that. I mean, all I can tell you is, if he notifies me, even if he goes put them in jail, I'll get them out the next day. I mean, I can, I can make that happen. With the judge, I mean, the judges is gonna have to do it. I talked to y'all magistrate judges and parole judges over and meeting over, and she told me that she would like to use this. You know, I guess she has a lot of first time hearings or whatever, and she's having to put people in jail, she told me that she would like to use this to save the county money. She'd rather spend fourteen dollars a day than thirty-five a day. I mean, it's pretty much a no brainer. All I'm here is basically to answer any questions y'all have about it, I mean, I mean, I know y'all, I sent it back, you know, I'll talk to you about anything you want to. I mean, it, it's, it's a good thing, it's just matter where you want to go. The judge is basically telling me that if, if you'll set up a funding, they'll put as many people as they can on. But until you say, we'll fund it, they're not gonna draw up the criteria of the people that they gonna put on. They're waiting on y'all, and y'all waiting on me, and I'm trying to get everybody to do the same thing.
Today, you got.
Yeah, there's a ninety day, we can terminate without cause.
That's right.
But it also says that we have to pay you for any equipment and services, uh, if we do decide to terminate, so what equipment and services will have to be prepaid?
You won't have none, I'll just come get it. I'll just come get that quick.
I know, but I, I just, the contract's what the contract says, so.
Well, it is, it's, you know, I mean, contracts just.
Well, you know how it is too.
I understand. I mean, that's why I give it to Albert, for y'all to take it to your lawyer and let him read it, and y'all can pick out the things y'all didn't like, we'll, we'll talk about it.
All right, so there is no upfront cost?
There is no upfront cost, y'all.
If we terminate?
Right, I thought originally that it said thirty days, but it says ninety. And basically, what you'll be doing is paying, you're not paying in advance. Like, if we put them on, say, today, you'll get a bill next month. So, so that's really a lot of the ninety day things is, I mean, you might can say, okay, we don't wanna do it no more, but then you still gonna have that much cost still coming. I mean, if it might, does that make sense to you? I ain't coming here saying, okay, we put a bracelet on, he'll pay me fourteen dollars. You know, we billing you after that, not anything.
If you terminate, you just won't do any more new ones, but you'll follow.
We'll take everything off, but you'll just pay, you don't have no equipment, no nothing like that, we'll just come take everything off, but you'll probably receive still one bill. It's basically what it says.
What I was asking you, for the terminate with the ninety day language, you just won't put any new ones on, but you'll follow the other ones out during the ninety day period?
That's right, but you'll still be paying for them.
Right, right. 'Cause you can't just go cut it off until the court determines what they wanna do.
Well, I mean, if y'all say we're not gonna do it, then basically, well, I don't know, I'll tell the judges, I'll tell them, here, we got this many people out here on bracelets that don't wanna fund it no more, and we gonna, we'll pick them up, throw them back in jail, but now, that could cause a problem, 'cause I don't know what jail y'all wanna use. You know what I mean? And I don't wanna, I don't wanna be the one to say, well, I'm gonna take them to Cook County, 'cause I'm from Cook County. You know, I'm always saying, well, send them to Cook County, 'cause then they'll say, well, he's gonna be down to date.
That's just something that needs to be addressed.
I mean, I'm not sitting over here trying to take money away from Cook County, I'm over here trying to save, but. And I'm gonna go to them, but the, the object of this is to do it circuitwide. I come to y'all because y'all have a debt. Y'all are at the mercy of the surrounding counties.
How many, how many monitor do you have going now?
Don't have any on that, I've been working on this for two years. I used to be a commissioner, and the DA told me that it would probably be a conflict, so I didn't touch it, so now, that I'm out of it, I'm doing it. But there's nobody in this area with this secure level. I am their rep. I mean, they have twenty-four hour monitoring service, I mean, that's, that's why I told you, Sheriff, and, and if y'all start doing it, I, we'll come over and we'll set up a computer and I'll show you. We take you, and we put you on a monitor, and I walk you out of that door, and I can watch you walk down that road. And I'll show you. You can't hide it. If you go into a building, I know you end up in it. This thing is set up to where you can draw zones for like people that's locked up for child molestation, stuff like that, where he can't get rid of church, schools, or anything like that. You can go in and you can cut every church, every school, everything out in your whole county and block it and rid it. If he gets within so many feet of that, it's kinda sound like a law, and it becomes a thing. I tell it, I say, you, you've been violation, you need to get out of that area. I mean, that's just how, I mean, it's somebody, it's scary, like, I mean.
I mean, as long as he listens and leaves, then you don't have an issue, or no, but however if he doesn't, that's when you may need the sheriff or you gonna come?
Or something like that, I'll, I mean, I'm not gonna bother the sheriff down with, matter of violation like that, if he's overhand it, I'm coming. And I'm gonna lock him up, and we're gonna have to come to an agreement of where y'all want him on. It's gonna be tried, you know that, this is good as I do. I mean, they gonna try you. Problem you gonna have, and this is where I'm at, you, I would, if I was in jail, I'd rather be sitting at the house than sitting in jail. So they gonna try you, but they ain't gonna try you one time. But I think it'd be good, thank y'all, I'd rather do it. But it's up, y'all, I mean, you know, just like I said, this is not a new line item for you, I mean, you're already spending it, but it's just a matter of whether you wanna try to save some of what you're spending.
If you're called to a violation, do you have the authority to put him in jail? Are you gonna be dead or alive?
I'll be tracking.
No, are you gonna?
I'm gonna have the cuz, I'll put him in jail. I'll be like, I'll be like a bondsman.
Okay, you're a bondsman.
I'll be like a bondsman. Well, I'm certain I'll be a bondsman, but, I mean.
Well, that's gonna be my question, how, does that contract address that authority?
This is strictly a contract in the company. I guess the authority would have to be met when it speaks with the judges or the sheriffs and then all that, be in that agreement.
Well, I mean, that's, that's a lot of things that's got to be worked out, I mean, like I said, if, if, if man keep being in violation, being in violation, then we're gonna have to have an understanding and say, okay, you can take him to these jails.
When I talked to the sheriff about it, he said it seemed like he was on board with us.
Well, he told me he wasn't against it, he just, what he told me was he had five deputies and he did it. And I told him that he wasn't really having to do anything, other than if I needed him for like an emergency, that's when I would ask him.
Well, would it make sense maybe to employ those deputies when they're off duty, that, you know, have an agreement with them, but?
Well, this was a thing that I worried about. If you didn't want to burden them, you could get you, kind of like a, uh, a retired policeman or something, and then have him go out there on a by-call basis. If you call, you go and you take care of it. And that way you wouldn't have a man sitting there that you paying all the time, he would just get so much money, so, have a call.
If the sheriff didn't wanna do along this by the, can you still do it? I mean, only except that it's for a pressure.
Well, he told me, you want everybody on board.
That's right.
I, like I said, he's not against it, I mean, he just, he don't want his department to make burden. Now, I mean, like I said, I don't think he will be burdened, but I'm not gonna say or tell you that it ain't gonna happen, 'cause just as soon as I stand around here and tell you that it ain't gonna happen, it's gonna happen. But I don't look for, I mean, all small violations, will take, will happen. And it, it ain't that big of a, I mean, a lady in Tennessee has been doing this, and it's, I mean, it's not a big, it's not that much problem. I mean, not only are you saving the money, sure, not only are you saving the money as a jail cost, if you have somebody that gets in there and gets sick or something like that, you got medical expenses. I mean, this is just raw cost. This ain't.